Roll call, Mr. Veder. Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Magsman?
Here.
White?
Here.
Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. As we have this moment of silence this morning, let's remember in our prayers the three young men that were killed in the accident over the weekend and all those other ones that lost their lives. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? Move the pollsters amended?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public that'd like to comment on anything that isn't on the agenda? Bring it to our attention. If not, we'll move on to claims and payments. Ms. Deaton?
Yes. The county's expenditures this week total $357,933.16. Three-five-seven-nine-three-three-point-one-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the items? Not this resolution? Please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Expenditures for Country View?
Country View's expenditures this week total $122,315.34. One-two-two-three-one-five-point-three-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation by Gwen Bramlett Pecker, Development Director of the Riverview Center of Domestic and Sexual Violence Services. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, I'm Gwen Bramlett Pecker. Very nice to meet all of you.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce the real presenters, the people with the
Want to get over closer to the microphone, please?
People who have the expertise. This is Alicia Smiley. She's the Iowa Program Director for the Riverview Center. And Kaylee Michelson, who is our UNI Campus Coordinator for Riverview Center. And I'll let them start and then
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Alicia Smiley, and I'm the Program Director with Riverview Center.
And I'm Kaylee Michelson. I'm the UNI Campus Coordinator and Sexual Assault Advocate for Riverview Center.
And I'm Michael Fleming. I'm a faculty member at UNI and on the Board of Directors for Riverview Center.
I will start off this presentation by taking the opportunity to thank you for having us here. We greatly appreciate it. It's our first time presenting, and so this is huge and exciting for me and us at Riverview Center. Like I said, I am the Program Director at Riverview Center. I have been in victim services since 2006. I started with Seeds of Hope as a bilingual sexual assault advocate and have found victim services to be a passion of mine. So that makes it 11 years, or I've passed my 11-year mark, and so I'm excited and proud to still be in victim services, especially here with Riverview Center focusing on sexual assault services. Riverview offers free and confidential advocacy services to survivors of sexual assault, sexual violence, childhood sexual abuse, and their support people or anyone who feels like they're also affected by it. So we offer services in 14 counties in northeast Iowa and then two counties in Illinois. In Illinois, we provide domestic and sexual assault services. In Iowa, it's just sexual assault services. In 2013, the state restructured victim services, as many of you probably remember. And so in 1992, Riverview Center started in Galena, Illinois. It moved over into Dubuque County and Delaware County. And then in 2013, Riverview started providing services in 14 counties of northeast Iowa. In the document that you, we've provided you, we've outlined our services and some success stories that we feel highlight some successes that the survivors that we help have made it through. Our services include a hotline. So any of our phone numbers plus our 888 number will be answered 24 hours a day, night, weekends, holidays. If they are not answered by Riverview staff in the evenings, we roll them to the state call center, the state hotline. So those are trained advocates that can provide services over the phone. If they are in need of some medical advocacy, which is the next service we provide, we are, they will call us and we are happy to go with anyone to the hospital or meet anyone at the hospital if they want to get a checkup and an exam or an evidence collection exam done because they've been sexually assaulted. When we arrive, we let people know their rights as survivors, and then we help them through the process. We also help them with options that they have after, since they're now a victim of a crime, and support them whatever they choose for themselves, okay? We can also provide legal advocacy, so civil or criminal legal advocacy. If anybody would like to apply for a sexual assault protection order or report to the law enforcement, we're happy to be there with them. They have a right to have an advocate, and we can be their emotional support through that reporting system. We do, we provide personal advocacy, so helping people with their rights and their options, sitting and listening, letting them process what they've been through and supporting whatever choice that they make for themselves and their future. We have a staff member that is dedicated to violence prevention. We feel like in order to have culture change in our communities, we need to try to prevent violence. And so we have an advocate-preventionist that dedicates her time to speaking to communities and children trying to prevent violence. And then in some of our offices, we provide therapy. Not in Waterloo, but we would absolutely love to have a therapist in our Waterloo office. So therapy definitely promotes the long-term healing from trauma in people's lives. So we would like to work toward that in our Waterloo office. Along with outreach, or along with those services I explained, we provide outreach services, and one of them is to the UNI campus. So I have, Kaylee here is going to speak on what she does specifically for students, and then Dr. Fleming will speak on the partnership with UNI.
Like Alicia said, we provide a lot of services to the community as well as UNI students. So in my position, I provide a lot of those services to UNI, and there's specific services that are provided to UNI students. So some of those include walking them through a UNI policy process. So that process is different than the criminal system. It's their own process where someone can have penalties for sexually assaulting someone. So I can walk them through that and be with them at any part during that and kind of just be their support person and explain that process because it can be very confusing. Another service that we provide is support groups to UNI. So every semester, we have a closed support group for sexual assault survivors. And we have had, this will be the sixth semester, I believe, that we are providing that support group. And it has been very beneficial for students to be able to have a safe environment to talk to other survivors and to learn more about maybe some of the trauma that they're experiencing and some of the coping skills that they might be doing. Some of the other things that we provide is presentations on campus to different classrooms, to fraternities, sororities, different organizations across campus to provide what Riverview Center is, the services that we provide, what consent is, what sexual assault actually is, and different policies around that. So those are just a few of the main ones. We also do different referrals across campuses, and we receive different referrals from other individuals. We train RAs as far as how to handle if one of their students comes to them and discloses they've been sexually assaulted. Those are kind of just an outline of the services we provide at UNI.
Good morning. As Kaylee and Alicia said, my name is Michael Fleming. I'm a faculty member of the School of Polyhuman Sciences, and I'm also with the Center for Violence Prevention. I've been at UNI since 99, and starting around 2000, became involved with campus efforts to address sexual assault on campus. We had a couple of Department of Justice grants and and also part of what was happening in that time is its creation as an aftermath of those grants, the Center for Violence Prevention. My scholarship focuses on violence prevention issues. My teaching focuses on that. As I said, I serve on the Board of Directors for Riverview. Prior to that, the Seeds of Hope. And I sit on the Iowa Department of Public Health Advisory Board for sexual assault and domestic violence. So those are kind of the contexts that I bring to the table. The Center for Violence Prevention takes a pre-K through 16 approach to violence prevention. We work primarily with secondary schools in Iowa and in the Cedar Valley as well as colleges. One of the things that we really appreciate and value with the partnership with Riverview is that, as many of you are aware, that colleges can be a real high-risk environment. When you look about alcohol, concentration of young people together. We know nationally, one in four, one in five women will experience some type of sexual assault during the four years that they're there. UNI is not that unique. We have UNI, we have Hawkeye, we have other higher-ed institutions in the catchment area of Riverview. So being able to partner with them is important and from a victim services perspective. They provide 24/7, 365 days. We've had advocates on campus as part of the UNI community, but they are not, they were not 24/7, 365-day. And they also were not able to provide the confidentiality that Riverview does. The Center for Violence Prevention is staffed by Alan Heisichamp, the Director, and then myself, who I get a course release to work to help doing some evaluation and research. So we're a small unit. We, part of what we do is feel perhaps free to talk about these issues in a way that they haven't in the past. So being able to have Riverview as part of the prevention work, part of the education helps to get upstream in some of these issues, but also provides an outlet for individuals that are struggling with these issues or thinking about these issues or know somebody that has been impacted by these issues to have a face, to have a contact, to have a free 24/7 confidential source that they can, they can connect with. So that's kind of what I wanted to share this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael and Kaylee.
A couple of other outreach opportunities that we provide at Riverview Center is a sexual assault response team. And so we have support from the County Attorney's Office, all local law enforcement, the three hospitals in the area, and then other victim service agencies. We all come together monthly to talk about what's going on in our communities, to problem-solve together, and to celebrate what is going well. We provide support groups, not only on campus, but locally in the community for anyone to come to. And then we also have a bilingual advocate. She provides monthly, or two times a month, support groups for people who have language barriers or who are unsure about what they can do, if they're documented or not. They have a lot of fear that comes along with that. And so we are happy to support immigrants in the community and let them know their rights and their options and bring them together as a community so they don't feel so isolated. We also partner with Embark and provide cross-training to each other's groups so we can better serve the communities that they focus on serving. Like Michael said, with this Me Too movement, there's been a light shone on all of the survivors out in the world and the communities in the United States. And so our caseloads have grown exponentially in the last six to nine months. Our response time is longer, so if somebody wants to come in and meet with somebody and maybe talk about what they've been through, see if they have options, we might not be able to actually get them in the office for a week. And in the past, it's been one or two days. We are only being able, we're only able to focus now on the crisis, immediate crisis work, and then give them referrals to other agencies that can meet them, meet their needs for other things. And in the past, we've been able to stay with them for a longer term. But with the amount of increase, we focus on the crisis now. And then we would also like to provide a lot more services to the other colleges in our service area, specifically Hawkeye and Kaplan in upper Iowa here in Blackhawk County. But because of the increased caseloads and the shortage of staff, we can't get there as much as they need it. So this, this ask this morning would absolutely help us provide many more services, the full gamut of services that we would like to provide and the services that they're asking us for. It's not just what we want to do or, you know, we know they need it. And so we, we absolutely want to expand staff members so we can provide that. Are there any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask how you're funded. I know you're making a funding request today, but primarily, do you have just a small number of donors or?
We have private donors. We also receive local funding from United Way and other boards of supervisors in our area. One, one of our counties provides funding for a whole therapist position. Then we also receive funding from different foundations. Then we get state funding for prevention and advocacy and sexual assault response team. And then we also get federal funding to, you know, provide advocacy and outreach services.
If I could add a comment to that. You know, we all know how state and federal funding is being challenged and pressed these days. So from the outside, one of the things that I know Riverview has to do, as well as many of these agencies, is spend a lot of time out there knocking on doors seeking funding on an annual basis, you know? And the fluctuation that can occur from state funding or private funding is a challenge for nonprofits in general. So the resource, the time, the resources that are demanded to kind of keep speaking to that on an ongoing basis. Gwen, World can speak to it.
Just a quick comment on that. We did experience cuts last year from our, in our state funding, as did most victim service agencies. And looking at where things are going now from the Governor's projection, her wish list budget, and where I think the legislature's going to go, I anticipate that we will receive another significant cut this year in our state funding. At the federal level, we are funded, we receive some funding through the Victims of Crime Act, as well as the Violence Against Women Act. Both of those are also at jeopardy of receiving cuts this year. So as the Development Director, that's, that is my job to make sure I keep my eyes on that and my ears on that, and to make sure that we turn over every stone we can to find funding, which is why we're here. One of the things that occurred in this past year when we did, when Kaylee did move her office from our office here in Waterloo to the UNI campus, it was fantastic. It's a wonderful way to serve the students. A UNI did reduce a position. Their sexual assault advocate position was eliminated when we moved on to their campus and took an advocate from our Waterloo office and put it in the campus on UNI, really stretching our resources. And we do not receive any funding from UNI for that service. So we have seen a decrease in funding. We see our funding is at risk, and we see our resources having been stretched even more, which we love. It's fantastic that we're able to do that. But we do need further support to continue addressing the survivors that are coming to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question on your hotline. Yes, I mentioned a 24-hour service, I guess. How do you market that, or how are people made aware of that hotline, or who to call?
We have it on everything that we print to put out into the community. So the brochures that you have are all of our business cards. We put tear-off flyers, which maybe you've seen some, but they have little tabs you can pull on the end. We put those in private places, lots of times bathrooms, but also on community boards. And so people can read about services and just take a little tag. It doesn't have a lot of info, just the number on it, so it can still be private, confidential, if somebody else finds that number. And then
On social media?
Yeah, on social media. So we have Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And then we, any radio spot or television spot that we've done or will do, we put it on there also. Professors actually ask students to get their phones out and put it in their phones. I've started doing that at many presentations and
I have to, yeah, do that as well. And then any client that comes to us, we explain that to them because we are not personally, like I'm not available at night, so I want to make sure that my clients have someone to talk to if in the middle of the night they have a trigger or a crisis that they have someone to talk to. So we talk to all of our clients about that number as well.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next up is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. The roads are in pretty good, fair to good shape this morning. There is still some snow on most of the roads. They're still probably 10 to 30% snow and ice covered. We do expect that to improve in the next coming days as the temperature warms up by the end of the week. Several weeks ago, I did receive a call from a Mr. Youngblood who is interested in having his road vacated. He is very near the Gilbertville Milling Company, and his road has essentially been a private drive for at least 30 years. We have not done any maintenance on his road for many, many years. So we, I'll be working with you and working with him to get, see if we can get the title to that property placed in his name. And can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
That's near the Cedar River Milling Company?
Yes, the road, Youngblood Road is directly south of Washburn Road. So it comes off of Washburn Road.
Any other department heads? Moving on to minutes approved for January 9th, 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on any of the items? Not this resolution? Please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is reports. Motion to receive and place on file with the County Auditor, the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office Annual Report for 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
I sent you an electronic read-ahead version of this, so I really don't intend to regurgitate much of anything. Crime is down. Jail population is up. As I stated at the beginning of the forefront introduction to the annual report, this is kind of the year of change for the sheriff's office. We changed the jail security software, which were down to just a few locks. And the punch list items, as you know, that's kind of the last part of the project, and that's where we're at for the next few weeks. Everything is going famously. I did indicate to you in a prior email that the Black Creek system did fail two weeks into the transition, and it was not able to be recovered. So the timing could not have been better or more timely for getting this transition to occur. Also, the radio project, we are just finishing this week the 30-day test of the new P-25 radio system at the sheriff's office. That test has gone famously. And so starting next week, we will start migrating other agencies on to the new P-25 system. So in a nutshell, that kind of encapsulates our year of change and things that have occurred. We've had some administrative changes, a new jail administrator, a new chief deputy due to retirement. But everything else is pretty status quo, and we're reasonably happy. I don't know how much longer we're going to be able to keep showing reductions in crime because I think we're getting to a point where we've met, we've met that homeostatic level. But I am pleased to be able to continue to show that. Any questions for me?
Seeing that crime is down in Blackhawk County and the other cities in Blackhawk County, yet the jail population is up, what is the reason? What causes that?
Well, as you know, I think Chief Truck called it his sticky wicket or the fly in the ointment is violent crime. And for us, we have never held more forcible felons than we are currently holding in jail. As the County Attorney recognizes, when you're facing a forcible felon, you're facing 50 years to life. So the court processes purposely slow down, which means their heads stay in our beds for much longer periods of time. So holding such a dynamic population and then having to hold them for a lot longer period of time so there's no missteps, no opportunities for appeal, that kind of thing, they occupy those beds for a lot longer period of time. That kind of clogs that system just a touch. The good thing is, if you look point-counterpoint to this, we're catching them. Yes, they're committing crimes, and what, they have seven murders last year in Waterloo, and that's unfortunate numbers, but they're being caught and held accountable. And they're being caught and held accountable in the Blackhawk County Jail. So that's really where that bottleneck starts to occur. We don't have the Otis's that check themselves in on the weekends anymore.
I see at the state level, a continued reduction to fund the court system. Does that have an impact on not being able to have the necessary resources to bring individuals to trial?
No. What it actually is doing, just like about everything else in state government, is it's transitioning costs from the county, from the state to the county. EDMS is a great example. You all know about the Electronic Data Management System. There's no less paperwork being generated, just not being generated at the courthouse as being generated at the jail. So a lot of that fund reduction is actually, just like everything else, being passed on to county government to pick up the slack and carry that weight. And so by way of resource, which was your question, that's not really an issue. The issue is kind of the shell game that occurs as those funds are drawn down here, they increase here.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Contracts and agreements. This is a resolution to approve the addendum to the contract received from Code Publishing Incorporated for codification services in web hosting for Blackhawk County Code ending January 30th, 2019, and to have a shared assignment for same as recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Dollar amount?
I'm sorry, I don't, I think it's 200, but I need to check on that.
Yeah, it was 200. I did look, happened to look at it this morning. Web hosting and codification.
Any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other businesses. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Advanced Environmental Incorporated Waterloo out for this specific subatement-led buyout property with a bid of $1,375 to be approved as recommended by Susan Deaton, County Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion to release an RFP for the Blackhawk County Insurance and Related Risk Management Services.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Also, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have the two supervisors from the insurance committee. Dana, who is boardroom, she's in charge of the liability insurance. And Rory Dana, who is boardroom, she's in charge of the liability insurance, and Rory, who deals with a lot of RFPs, be on the committee to review the RFPs. And I would concede my spot to the chair if the chair wants to be on that.
Fine, you can keep your position. Any other information? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called. Or no? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution that taxes due and payable of the submitted persons as indicated, including special assessments and rates or charges, including interest fees and costs in accordance with provision 427.9 of the Code of Iowa, be suspended, and the future property taxes on property owned by the persons will be suspended for such time as the persons remain the owner of the parcels, as during the period the persons receives assistance as described in 427.9 of the Code of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Layland?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion that the personnel requisition for the new lead worker facilities position, full-time and secondary roads department be approved as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to seconded, any discussion?
This is, comes about as the reclassification was approved last week, and this would be per the union contract for that new wage, and I believe I've discussed this quite a bit with you. Do you have any questions I can answer on this topic?
Any further questions? Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Aye.
Resolution adopted, or passes. Work session, discussion of possible board action, consideration of all aspects of fiscal year 19 Blackhawk County budget. Morning, Ms. Deaton, who are we starting with?
Morning. We're going to start with Veteran Affairs. Chuck, if you could put my screen up, please.
Okay. This is a summary of the Veteran Affairs proposed budget for FY19. A couple of changes. In the past, as you know, we've historically received about $10,000, or $10,000 from the Iowa Department of Veteran Affairs, that annual allocation, and we haven't budgeted for it in the past, but we're spending those dollars when we receive them, and so we really need to put it into our budget. We've always had enough budget savings on other line items to cover that, but if we don't put it in there and we don't have savings, then we'll run into issues. So, that funding has been reduced, and I think there's still a question about how much funding we will receive, but an email we had last year from Kevin indicated that FY19 would be about $4,800, and that's what we have budgeted for this year. It might be less than that. So we've added both revenue and expenditures for that item, and then Veteran Affairs, in the past couple of years, has received donations through fundraising activities since Kevin became director, and we haven't budgeted for those. So if we receive 20,000 in donations and we use that for services to veterans, we need to have that in our budget to make sure that we, you know, don't go over. So we have budgeted for 20,000 in donations, they've received more in the past, but that just gave us something to put in there this year. So that's why the revenues are up 24,800, and then the expenditures and the operating expenditures. There was actually, aside from those two items, there was a slight decrease in operating expenditures, so we're showing a $20,950 increase, and that's really related to those two items. And I'll let Kevin talk about any other items.
Good morning, Kevin Dill.
Morning.
It's pretty much the same as last year, really, no changes. Slight, a few hundred dollars here or there, but it's really almost the same as last year.
Susan, on the, going back to the grant and the donations, on the revenues, what if, what happens if they fall below that?
Well, I mean, and this is, you know, if we don't receive the funding from the state, or if we don't receive donations, then they shouldn't be spending those dollars. So, I mean, they're going to be in the budget, but our other option is to not budget for those, and then amend the budget if we need to, but, you know, we've been under budget in Veterans Affairs for the past several years, so I'd-
We'll be under budget again, I'm pretty sure of that.
When do you usually get that grant money?
Well, right now, the state legislature's still voting on it, the governor has requested even more decrease, which, I mean, I would decrease it too. We usually get that on July 1, so we'll get it on July 1. Either we'll get zero, or we'll get 4,800, or maybe we'll get 9,500. Nobody seems to know. Just waiting to see what the state legislature does.
Yeah, that's what scares me.
Kevin, you've been very successful in having donations, that's something new that we haven't had before. I don't know if the public or if all of us know how you're spending those.
Oh, sure.
Helpful to share.
Yeah. If you look in the budget, we took away really food costs. We used to have, oh, I think it was, I think at one time, before it was around $5,000 for food, then it was down to about 2,500, and I think it's zero now, because we used the donated funds for, oh, if a veteran needs help with food, we started a food pantry. So it was a little bit of that for food, gas, if a veteran needs gas to get to the VA hospital or do a job, we used donated funds for that, we took that away from the county. The rest of the donations go for wheelchair ramps, which we started with the VFW, the PTSD program that we did, where we paid gym memberships for veterans, that's donated funds, not from the county. Different events that we hold. Typically, most of the events we hold, where we had to use sometimes county money for the outreach, now it's donated funds. What else do we use it for? We've been starting to use a little bit for rental assistance for veterans, to take some of that burden off the county. When a company or a group or a service post donates money, they tell us how we want to spend it, and usually it's just to help veterans out, whether it's with their rent, food, gas, clothing, or whether we want to build a wheelchair ramp, whether we want to pay for their gym membership, whether we want to, whatever it may be. So, I think the first year, we got about 20-some thousand, last year it was maybe 35. I don't know, project about 20. I think we have a company that's going to be donating about 8,000 here in about a month, so.
I wonder, you've also done a really good job of getting a lot of in-kind donations. Do you have, just for the public's awareness, just a rough guess of the value of in-kind donations that you've been able to bring in this last year?
Chris, no, I don't, I guess I never sat down and, a lot of times now, when somebody wants to donate materials, wheelchairs, clothing, hospital beds, we don't have any place to store it, so we've been turning that over to Goodwill, Americans for Independent Living, who store that and work with veterans to get that out, but, no, I guess I've never sat down and figured that out. We do, we usually get two, three calls a week on that kind of things, but we just don't have any place to store it.
Why would we have a cost for fuel going down to, you get paid for that, or you get-
No, we don't take veterans to Iowa City. We have fuel for the van when we take veterans to their local appointments here in Waterloo, whether they're going to the Seabock there on-
For your van?
Yeah, for our van.
Okay. Misunderstood you.
Yep.
Are we having any luck with our veteran?
Yes, it was a, so, real quick, we have a veteran that lives in a assisted living, Mallard Point. Has a power chair, it wasn't a very good power chair, it broke down, we had somebody donate a power chair, now that one's kind of broke down. The VA will buy one for that veteran. We ran into some trouble in order for the VA to buy a $10,000 power chair. The veteran has to go to Iowa City and see physical therapy to get measured, taught some things, well, this veteran didn't want to go, so the VA said no. And so I made a call to the, luckily the director of the VA Hospital, and I had a chat last month, and I reminded the VA Hospital last week, I said, well, let me get this straight. We have an elderly veteran who, just so you know who this veteran is, he, and I've talked about him before, he's a pretty remarkable person. During World War II, during the invasion, he carried the map on all the landing points in his gas mask, he proudly portrays that in his apartment. So I asked the VA Hospital, so you're telling me that you're going to let this World War II hero starve to death, because he can't get in his power chair to go down to get food? Is that what you're telling me? And so, the guy that runs that program said no. I said, so you're going to get in your car, and you're going to drive here, and you're going to do what you got to do here. And so, from my understanding, he came up here on Friday and did that, so, yeah, it's just ridiculous. So, sometimes you got to push the VA. The VA provides a lot of things, they don't always like to, but that's where the networks that we've tapped into, with the director of the VA Hospital, with the director in Des Moines, I speak to them all the time. Recently, I was able to connect with an attorney that works with Ernst &amp; Grassi's office quite a bit, and we're getting a regulation changed here recent, pretty soon, with his help, so it's just networking, and then putting people on the spot and say, really, you're going to let this veteran starve to death, just because you won't get in your car and drive 80 miles? Give me a break, so.
Man's in his mid-90s, and has, he's leaning like my friend Robert out there, and in his mid-90s, and has done his share in his lifetime, and he has a hard time walking from here to where Bob's at now, so, he's requested a chair, he had one that was, I wouldn't even consider, it was horrible, it was, but he was okay with it, because that's the, that's the World War II veterans mentality.
Look, outlook on life, and he had a chance for another one, but he ended up giving
it to another vet at the field that was, needed one at the time, so, for a time, he's been without one, so, it's like you said, he went to starve to death, but it's a good point, he, you know, he likes to go down, and that's, that's the only conversation he gets, other than I go over and visit him, is when he goes down for lunch every day, so, it's nice that we've gotten that taken care of.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Sure.
Is it, nothing else?
Thank you, Robert.
We're going to move to community services, or social services, I guess, now referred to as, and Colleen is here to talk about her budget. There really, there really is no change, the only change, Colleen puts in a 3% increase on the contracts that we're outsourcing, and she can talk about those, and then just the salary and benefit increase, so, those are the only changes in Colleen's budget, and I'll let her talk about that.
Okay. Colleen Chipper, General Assistance Coordinator. As she says, really, our budget's pretty much stayed steady for several years. The only increase we ever really asked for is the 3% for the outsourcing agencies, and that's Eastside Ministerial, Jesse Cosby, and Operation Threshold. In fiscal year 04-05 is when we outsource to them, and we just like to give them that little bit of increase every fiscal year, because they do an outstanding job at seeing all the general assistance clients. We don't do any of them in-house, the only ones we do in-house is just the burials and once in a while, a medication. For fiscal year 18, Eastside Ministerial was given 34,420, along with Jesse Cosby Center, and then Operation Threshold was given 5,940. We'd like to increase that 3%. I think for last fiscal year, they did around 2,700 intakes. It's just a very busy program, constant phone calls, requests. It's, it's been, as far as intakes, it's stayed pretty steady, up and down, all depends on who's requesting assistance with what. As far as all the expenses, the only, it's stayed pretty steady as far as rent and utilities. We have been able to increase that $25 per person for shelter, $25 per person for utilities. The reason we're able to do that without increasing the overall budget is the affordable healthcare. That has saved us a lot of money for substance abuse charges and medication charges, so that's, we've just been moving dollars around, and other than that, that's about it, unless anybody has any.
Have we given that 3% every year?
We have. We try to base it on what I get for an increase for the union contract, it kind of fluctuates, we've just kind of stuck with the 3%, we've been doing that.
Is it 3% for services?
That is for their operating, it's budget under services, but it's actually for their operating expenses. Eastside Ministerial has approximately three employees that work pretty much full-time, or that 34,000. Jesse Cosby has three to four, and Operation Threshold has about two. So like last fiscal year, we spent around 75,000 for about nine employees, so, I think that's a pretty good deal.
It is, I guess I was confused, I didn't think we were going to spend money on-
I know, I think-
On salaries, I thought it was supposed to be all for services when we initially approved those agreements.
Yeah, I wasn't in on the decision on that, I mean, I was employed by the county at that time, I don't, I just don't see where we could expect them to do, I mean, when, in 1990, when I started, we had 13 full-time employees doing what they're doing, so I know it was costing a lot more money, so I can't see where we could expect them to do it for nothing. They do an outstanding job, there's no duplication in services, because I still administer all of that, it all comes through me, it all gets paid on them.
It gets checks and balances on it?
Yeah, they don't have any of the, the only money that they get internally is just that administrative dollars, everything else is still through our office, all the bills come through me, and there's just a spreadsheet that goes out to them, they are very good with communicating with each other, that. So, unless there's, I think that's really about it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We're going to move on to HR. In the HR budget, you'll notice there's a smaller-than-average increase in salaries and benefits, and that's just due to changes in staffing that occurred, and then changes in benefit selection, I guess, for those employees. Operating expenses has been reduced slightly, and you can see on the detail, those various reductions, a little in training, a little in publications, and Debbie can talk more about those. And then, for capital, they're requesting 4,000 for additional office furniture, and I'll let Debbie talk about that too, so. Morning, Board, and it over to Debbie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in the benefits, right, we probably have a couple of changes in the benefits, one most likely going off the insurance first part of July, and one coming on. So that will be just a slight, it's not quite a wash though, because the one coming on will most likely be family coverage. As far as the training goes, I just redistributed that somewhat, I know, I was kind of kept in mind, Supervisor Little wanted us to try to do something to not have, you know, leave the office unattended, and so, Tom, in order to do that, I kind, I looked at all the available training, and I would, for myself, I chose N-Pelra and I-Pelra, and for my staff, then I chose the Iowa Employment Law Conferences, the Cedar Valley SHRM, and the ECI.
Do you know where you're at today on your FY18 budget? You budgeted, well, the actual was 10,375, do you know where you're at on a dollar amount?
On the detailed budget worksheet report, which was ran sometime last week, are we looking at training? Is that the question, on training?
Yep.
Okay, so there are 20,000, or their 2018 actual amount is $3,066, their budgeted
And then, as far as the other training, I kept the consultant training and the outside providers, still trying to, we do have one scheduled for March 1st, we have the sexual We have the sexual harassment training scheduled. And then I'm hoping to get at least one more scheduled before the end of the fiscal year. So some of those speakers, when they come in, they cost quite a bit more. Otherwise, there's been an overall reduction. I noticed there was a couple subscriptions we were paying for but really not utilizing, so I just stopped those. I do intend to get, Mary Ann is actually off today getting, doing her testing for the SHRM CP. And so I was hoping to be able to send Amanda next year. She has to have a year under HR before she can go. So she probably won't, I don't know if I'll be able to get her in, like in the fall. I might have to wait till this time next year to actually get her in. I'm waiting for a determination from them on that, but it still should happen in the fiscal year.
And why under-operating, why more furniture?
For what? In the, on the capital request?
Oh, this year, we had budgeted $10,000 for furniture. It didn't go quite as far as I had hoped. We still haven't done our conference room. It's, we've got a big oversized table in that room. Makes it a little difficult to use. And then our filing system is kind of outdated. They're rusting on the top and the drawers don't open very well. Would like to replace it.
That was a table and chairs then in the filing system?
Yeah. If you haven't come down and looked at the furniture, you should. It's wonderful. Thank you. We're enjoying it. And we, we use those lifts often.
Any questions for Deb?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Not a whole lot there, is there?
No. And it's reduced from last year. So last year, we, we had 5,000 in for that new mailing. I can't remember what it was, in the mailroom.
Opening.
That new machine. The letter, yeah, that's what it was. And then, so we don't have anything this year. And then operating expenses, the reduction is really due to the reduced costs for audit fees. Kind of offset by, this year, we'll need to have an actuarial valuation on our health insurance fund for the audit. So other than that, there weren't really any other changes. I made some, a few minor adjustments. This is where we have budgeted training for the, for the Board of Supervisors. This is also where we used to budget training for lean, and I left that in there as well. And then...
Where are you at on lean to date?
I don't think, you know, since Amanda moved to, to HR, we haven't really focused on that. I don't know that we've had any events. So we really need to, when Amanda gets back, we need to kind of take a look at that and see what we can do.
What's the dues and memberships? What's that for?
They're detailed out in the budget worksheet report. Let me look at them. So there's Intercog, the, well, there's a couple different line items because, under different orgs. Under General County Management is the Intercog, Cedar Valley Coalition, the Iowa Lean Consortium, ISAC, Metro Funders, and NACO. Let me see if there's any other. The GFOA membership is under another org. I've split the summary just to show you. This is the general fund on top. And then we have the expenditures on the rural basic is for the township officials. We just budget $550 for their, per DM if they request that. Any other questions on this budget?
How are we charged for ISAC and NACO? How's that cut right down to a cost of 6,200 for ISAC?
So...
The population or what's it go?
I'd have to pull that invoice up to see. This Intercog membership, this is for the Cedar Valley Coalition. And then there's another Intercog membership that we pay out of the Board Agency Fund. And that's, that's for, that's kind of based on the per capita. And I think that's going up a penny.
What was the Cedar Valley Coalition?
I think that's a separate group within Intercog.
It's the ones that send individuals out to the Capitol, Murchton, DC to look at projects.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, secondary...
Which we haven't sent anybody for years.
Probably at least three years. But some, if there's issues with road construction, we have sent representatives out there in the past. But I guess it's to support that overall network in order to be able to go out there and do that.
But if Kathy, if you go, that falls under your budget, doesn't it?
It hasn't.
Yeah.
So there hasn't been any board members that have gone out for...
You go.
At least three years. But we may, you know, if they, if there's significant progress made on the alternative for Highway 63 corridor, going around Northeast Side, that may become an issue in the future.
But again, that'd be our engineer that would probably go up for that.
Unless a board member wanted to go support that. I would recommend you go out there.
You've tried for years.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we've got several budgets to look at that we, you know, control or supervise. Taking a look at civil service. If you, if you look at the actuals, '17, you know, we hardly spend anything. We did reduce our budget for '18, and this is due to the transition from the deputies to civilians. And then we've pretty much left it the same for FY19. I did talk to Chris Ping, and they will be doing some testing this year, but then she's still a little unsure, I think, for FY19. But it will, will not be as much as we had in the past just due to the transition, so... That's a very small budget. Any questions on that? The next two, we've got the medical examiner budget. And I didn't change this one. You can see in FY17 actuals, our total expenses were 237. We're only budgeting 220. I'm hoping that this trend, this upward trend will maybe level off or we can go back down. '16 and '17 were much higher than, than the previous years. But I did leave it the same. I looked at our actual costs so far. I know we had several autopsy fees that we're paying this week, but prior to that, those are so delayed and it was hard to get a, an average of what we were spending so far this, this year.
It's a guesstimate, it's all you can do.
So no change in that one. Oh, just real quick, District Court Administration, that's a very small budget, and I didn't change that either. Just 11,900. It's the court-appointed attorneys mainly. So no change in that. We've been under that. I guess '16 was a kind of close to that, but '17 was under it. And then the other one is juvenile court services. And I also left that one the same. We had increased it last year. Last year, we increased both juvenile court services and medical examiner only because the previous actuals for the previous couple of years had been higher and we had had to amend the budget. So you can see in '16, we spent 857,000. That was a high year. Last year, though, it came back down. It was only 712. So we have 800, 801 in the budget this year, and I left it the same for FY19, hoping that those costs will kind of stay within that. Any questions on any of those?
No. When we look at juvenile detention, you know, it's a cost that we have to incur when there's more youth that are being held at detention center and...
Mm-hmm.
It's controlled by the courts.
Is that the board you sit on?
Yes.
I was told the other day that youth shelter that we gave them, they're charging rent to community services?
That's correct.
That was a good deal.
If there's no questions, that, that's all we have for today. On Thursday, we'll have the sheriff, the engineer, and IT.
Starting at 9:00 on Thursday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before us this morning?
Oh, one thing I wanted to bring it up on that RFP thing. It probably won't go out till the end of February, I understand. So if there's a board member that hasn't seen it, maybe they want to take a glance at it to see if, if there needs to be anything added or deleted or so forth.
Entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? Moving second. Any discussion? Paul and David Rye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. We are adjourned.